Oh, well, I'm glad I got you all ready and I'm not ready. How is everyone tonight?
Good.
Good? All right. Let me just get this agenda open. I do apologize. Thought I was all set. If we can all just rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I see we have somebody in the military is here tonight. Sir, what is your name? Come on up. Sorry to put you on the spot. Go right through the podium there and just give us your name, rank, what... Sir, oh, your Army?
I am PFC James Sheffield. I'm with the United States Army Reserves down in Orlando.
Well, thank you for your service. Would you do us the honor of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, all righty.
It's all yours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sir, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Oh, Chief, I was going to give you a break tonight. Are you sure? Brian, why don't you give Chief a break tonight?
Well, if you'd like to join us in prayer, please do so at this time. Father, thank you for delivering our community through the storm. It hurt us, it hit us, and we came through. We still have a few more things that we need to tie up, Father, and please give us the guidance and give us the know-how and resources to make those things happen. We need you now more than ever. Please be with us tonight, Lord, and be with our council. Grant them wisdom and let your will be done. In your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Brian. Little editorial before we start, and Chief will hate that I do this to him, but as everybody knows through Hurricane Irma, in order for a city to recover and a city to come back, it takes a strong team and a strong staff. And there is no stronger team and staff than here in the city of Oviedo, and they are led in the EOC by Chief White. So let's give everybody a round of applause. And Chief, that countdown clock that you have for retirement goes for both of yous over there. You can just turn them off because we're just going to keep you all for a little bit longer.
Is that my retirement gift, courtesy of Duke Energy?
Oh, well, that's very, that's very nice of them. Outstanding job, staff, everybody, Brian, I mean, Patrick, all the way down the line. There's just too many to name. Three hundred employees. You know, you go around the city now. Chief, all the electric is on other than a couple of spots, homes here and there, I guess?
The rest of our non, but you probably have less than ten residences in there.
All righty, so that is a yeoman's effort. Ben Williams is in here. Ben, everybody kind of works behind the scenes in Public Works, and Ben was the initial liaison to Duke. And he had all of their phone numbers, emails, and, boy, were there a lot of them going back and forth to make sure that we got not only our power, but power on for the surrounding neighborhoods in unincorporated areas where best we could. So, again, unbelievable effort. We're going to recognize some folks who helped us with that in just a bit. The first item of business, though, we have to run through is our budget hearing. This is our second in adoption hearing tonight. So if everybody in the audience can just bear with us, it's just going to take us a few moments, and then we'll get on to the ceremonial items and the regular agenda. As I just mentioned, we have the budget resolutions 3462-17 and 3463-17, which this evening will set the milit rates and budget for the fiscal year 2017-2018. Mr. Cobb, do you have anything to add before I move along?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, you're asked to adopt the military and the budget for fiscal year 2017-2018. The general fund milage rate is 5.0770 mils. The general obligation bond, 2003 general obligation bond milage rate is 0.2050. The total milage rate is 5.820, which the total milage rate is the same milage that you had last year. The FY 2017-2018 budget maintains the service levels for 2016-17. It funds debt service for 2017-2018. It allocates a 3 percent salary increase for all employees, including bargaining units. There are funds for four full-time positions, new positions, that will begin January 1st. We have also, it funds various capital purchases for public safety. It furthers the implementation of our IT master plan. It also funds the new air handler for City Hall and the annexed buildings. And it maintains our 15 percent reserve fund balance. It's recommended that the City Council conduct public hearings and adopt resolutions to numbers 3462-17 and 3463-17.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing on the 2017-2018 City of Oviedo budget. I first need to state that the milage rate of 5.0770 mils is a revenue increase of 6.59 percent over the rollback rate of 4.7633 mils. At this time, I'll open up the public comment portion of the meeting. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council on our budget for 2017-2018? Excuse me, our milage rate for 2017-2018. Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion. And Mr. Groot, if you would do us the honor of reading the milage levy resolution number 3462-17, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution establishing the milage rates to be levied for fiscal year 2017-2018 by the City of Oviedo City Government, adopting the milage rates for the 2017-2018 fiscal year for the City of Oviedo at the overall rate of 5.2820 mils with 5.0770 mils for the city's operations and 0.2050 mils for payment on the 2003 general obligation bond issue, expressing legislative and administrative findings and intent and providing for implementing administrative actions, a savings provision, scrutiny errors, conflict severability, and ineffectivity. That's the resolution by Cobb, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. And I'm sorry about the feedback, folks. I'll try to minimize it as much as we can. It's one of the microphones. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the milage levy resolution number 3462-17, setting the milage rate of 5.0770 mils, which is 6.59 percent higher than the rollback rate of 4.7633 mils, and combined with the general obligation bond issue of .2050 mils, makes the overall milage rate in the City of Oviedo 5.2820. So...
Second.
Motion second. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
I just want to thank staff for a very challenging budget, and it's balanced, and everything's funded, and you all did a great job, and appreciate that.
Councilmember Pollock?
I just want to thank staff as well. This was my first budget process with Oviedo, and I was a little stressed out, being that my background is in the finance area, but you all put something together and pulled through for us, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Slater?
Appreciate everybody answering all my behind-the-scenes questions, so no comments further right now.
Great. Councilmember Britton?
Ditto.
All righty. Well, you know, and ditto for me as well. The budget process, the public doesn't sometimes realize everything that goes into it. It seems like it's very simple. We sit up here and we vote on these things, but it is always quite a challenge. One good thing to keep in mind is that the combined milage rate in the City of Oviedo of 5.2820 is lower than the milage rate was without the general obligation bond for Oviedo and the park back in 2000, 2001, 2002, 2003, and 2004. So we're doing, keeping the milage rate low while we're offering lots of services throughout the city. So is there anything else with the good of the order on the milage rate? Hearing none, the motion on the table is to adopt. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I do need now to publicly announce that the operating milage rate is set at 5.0770 mils, which is 6.59 percent higher than the rollback milage rate of 4.7633 mils, and combined with the general obligation bond issue of 0.2050 mils, the overall milage rate for the City of Oviedo for 2017-2018 is 5.2820 mils. And folks, I apologize for repeating that three times. That is state statute. And I have a nice little script here that tells me to do it all. Moving along, we're going to go on to ask City Attorney, Mr. Groot, if you can read the budget resolution, which is 3463-17.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. A resolution adopting the City of Oviedo's annual operating budget for the 2017-2018 fiscal year, beginning October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018, expressing legislative and administrative findings and intent and providing for implementing administrative actions, a savings provision, scrutiny errors, conflict severability, and ineffectivity. And that's the resolution by Cobb, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt resolution 3463-17, adopting the fiscal year 2017-2018 annual budget of $63,251,968 net of inter-fund transfers. So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Deputy Mayor, once again, you have the floor.
Nope.
Councilmembers Slater?
Looks good for now, but I am hopeful that we will be able to figure out how to acquire that land around Rowan Lake Park later down the road this year with some amendments.
Great. Councilmember Pollock?
Looks good.
Councilmember Britton?
Good.
All righty. And then I would just, again, like to add, staff, yeoman's effort, unreal job in trying times because the City Council always wants to keep the milage rate low, we always want to keep the budget lean, and we always want to provide excellent service. And the staff does that each and every day, and we are all very happy and very proud of each and every one of you, and we thank you for that. At this time, I'd like to call the vote. The motion on the table is to adopt. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I am going to close the public hearing on the final hearing, the milage rates and budget, and we are going to move on to the regular agenda. Thank you, everyone. Give me a second here to catch up. All righty, our next order of business, these are ceremonial items. These are recognitions of folks who actually helped us tremendously before, during, and after the hurricane. So Chief, I believe this is your item? Whose item is this? Chief Drew, who wants to join? Bobby, who's coming on? Why don't you all come on? All right. That's a big pot.
On behalf of all the departments, we wanted to bring some people before us tonight that helped during the hurricane, during, or I should say, prior to the hurricane hitting, and then afterwards, as far as the entire city, helping feed city staff and bringing a lot of different food, Publix, Mission BBQ, as well as one of our local real estate agents. And I think you have, we'd like to have council come down before us, and if you would read the names...
Why don't we come on down there? We'll join you. I've got some stuff up here, and...
I think Jeff wants to say...
Of course. Chief, go right ahead. I don't know if that's on there. Chief?
I'm walking around with this great big pot. Prior to the hurricane, as Kim Rockburn prepared, this was full of beef stew for the officers in the police department. It took two of us to lift it up. And so I know Kim's here and some representatives from Mission BBQ and Publix. So if you guys would come up?
I don't know what Publix is.
I guess Pub...
I'd like to hug you. Good job.
But I have to tell you, you have to, you have to have the cook come up, too.
Tim, you can take pictures later. You need to come up also.
That's right, Tim.
Second half of a dynamic duo. We got the Bernstein group.
Thank you.
It's like nine gallons. Probably less than that.
Well, as the, excuse me, as the chief mentioned, I mean, these folks went above and beyond in order to help feed and take care of the staff during, excuse me, before and after the hurricane. Many people don't realize that when we have an event coming in like this, that City Hall turns into a camp. We actually have these department directors here 24/7 in our EOC. They sleep on cots and mattresses while the hurricane's going on, and we're all at home. They're all here. So all the staff members that are here in the audience who spend 24/7 here, will you please stand up and be recognized? Everybody? There you go. That also, of course, includes, the entire police department was here as well. So everybody doesn't realize what goes in to manning an event like this, and the preparation up front, during, and after in order to take care of it. When we went through Charlie, we were very organized, at least we thought we were. But I must say to the whole entire team, it was light years ahead this time with our organization. So that's why the city recovered so quickly. But with all of that being said, we have folks here, as was mentioned, we have Kim Rockburn, and we're going to start with her, who made that big pot of stew I see right there.
You know, we're asking for one for police and one for fire.
Oh, Kim just informed me there were two, one for police and one for fire. Chief, did you, did you? Well, that doesn't surprise me with the firemen because they can use it again. But Chief, now, did you have the fireman's stew or did you have the police department's stew?
For some reason, it never made its way up to the EOC.
The stew in general or the fire department's stew?
The stew in general.
Oh, well, there, there you go. Chief, were you hiding the stew?
No, it was in their old area, that.
That is true. The police department, everybody always wonders what we're doing with the old fire department bays. For the time being, the police department have absconded them and taken over. So that's where the police department spent the evening. But anyway, Kim, we have just something simple here for you. It's, it's just the thanks of the city, thanks of the staff, and it reads, "It's a resolution of the City of Oviedo, Florida honoring Kim Rockburn. Whereas the City of Oviedo is proud to recognize Kim Rockburn for her service to our city, and whereas Kim Rockburn is a native Floridian and a community leader in the City of Oviedo who honors our nation's veterans through the Homes for Heroes program, and whereas Kim Rockburn has gone above and beyond in her service to the City of Oviedo and local charitable organizations, whereas in the aftermath of Hurricane Irma, the City of Oviedo faced great challenges in the recovery process requiring round-the-clock work by city staff, and whereas through coordinated effort, Ms. Kim Rockburn donated time and effort to provide meals to the City of Oviedo police, fire, public works, emergency operations, recreations, and park staff to aid in the swift recovery following the storm." So now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Oviedo that the mayor and the city council on behalf of the entire Oviedo community hereby recognize Kim Rockburn for her dedication to our community, and we wish to convey our deepest and sincerest thanks for their support of the City of Oviedo. We are presenting this this 18th day of September 2017. It has my signature and the city seal.
Tim, thanks.
And Tim, I'll give you a hug because that man that you cooked.
Great job, guys. We do appreciate it. Who likes Mission BBQ? All right. Well, the Pollock family, I think, owns stock in Mission BBQ. You're a DQ man, though. I see you at DQ all the time.
That means you're there, too, you know?
Huh?
That means you're there, too.
That means I'm at Mission Barbecue. We have, for Mission BBQ, we have Jennifer Saperman, kitchen manager, I'm sorry.
Saperman.
All righty, Saperman, Perceampierre, Perceampieri, you know. Saperman, kitchen manager, and Amy Briscoe, she is the operating partner. You guys are just incredible. I mean, since the moment you came into this community, the firefighter fundraiser event, the police fundraiser event, the veterans event, I forgot what it was called, pardon me, before you even opened, I mean, what, $10,000, $12,000 you donated back into the community? Anytime anybody calls, you guys are always, always there for us, and we do greatly appreciate it, and we love having you in our city. We love having you also, Kim, even though you're competitive, two of us. But it's, it's just outstanding to have you all here. So we do greatly appreciate it. I have in my hands here, again, a resolution of the City of Oviedo, and it's a resolution of the City of Oviedo, Florida honoring Mission BBQ. And it reads, "Whereas the City of Oviedo is proud to recognize Mission BBQ for its service to our city, and whereas the original Mission BBQ was founded on September 11, 2011." For those of you who don't know the story, that was the day they opened on purpose when you talked to their founders. And if anybody hasn't ever eaten there, if you go at noon, you are standing for the Pledge of, no, for the Star Spangled Banner, National Anthem. You are standing. Everything stops in the restaurant. There's no service, there's no food being prepped, nothing. It all stops. It's, it's just outstanding. "With the intention of honoring our nation's soldiers, firefighters, police, first responders, and veterans through the serving of quality barbecue at all of their locations. Whereas Mission BBQ Oviedo continued this spirit and has gone above and beyond in their service to the City of Oviedo and local charitable organizations, and whereas in the aftermath of Hurricane Irma, the City of Oviedo faced great challenges in the recovery process requiring round-the-clock work by the city staff, and whereas through coordinated effort, Mission BBQ donated time and effort to provide meals to the City of Oviedo police, fire, public works, emergency operations, recreation, and park staff to aid in the swift recovery following the storm." And before I continue, did you get any Mission BBQ?
I did not get any of the...
Ooh, I don't know. I don't know about this.
I don't know about that.
Chief? Chief?
He's giving me, and he's forgetting stuff.
No, okay, he's tired. Guys, can we hook the chief up with some Mission BBQ at some point in time? All righty, well, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Oviedo, Florida that the mayor and the city council on behalf of the entire Oviedo community hereby recognize Mission BBQ for its dedication to our community and wish to convey our deepest and sincerest thanks for the support of the City of Oviedo. Again, it's presented this 18th day of September in 2017. It is signed, and the city seal is affixed. Ladies, thank you so very much. We have one other community partner who, again, answered the call for service, and that is Publix. Everybody knows that every Publix in this community, no matter where or when you ask, will always help as best they can. So Publix here in Alafeha, was it? Alafeha Woods.
Can I also say something?
Yeah, I'm going to get to that one. I know what I forgot.
Oh, you said Publix? Because Publix also, from McCullough, donated all the French bread for all of the French for the beef stew.
Okay. All righty, well, Publix at McCullough, as Kim just said, donated all the bread for the beef stew. Publix here at Alafeha donated a whole bunch of food, water, and stuff that the city needed for the employees for the event. They could not be here tonight. We have the same exact resolution that I read to you this evening for them. We will get that delivered to them, Drew, I'm assuming, with no problem. Also, I failed to mention, Kim Rockburn also put together a breakfast for the police department, I believe. Police and fire?
The fire department breakfast was donated by the Townhouse Restaurant.
And the police department breakfast was donated by IHOP.
Chief, did you get any breakfast?
Stop asking me those.
I don't know, Chief.
No, I didn't have any else.
All righty, we, we, thank goodness they gave you at least one meal. What is it with you police officers? Jeez, I don't know. But anyway, guys, that just goes to the incredible community partnerships that we have here in the City of Oviedo. We say it all the time, you hear the council say it all the time. Anything happens in this community, everybody steps up and we help one another. It's in our DNA. It is who Oviedo is, and it is who Oviedo will always be. Everybody who's up here, including you, Tim, we want to thank you for all your dedication, service, and help to the City of Oviedo. Everybody give them a big round of applause, and we'll get a picture. You guys right up front, we're going to take a picture, Tim. You can leave the pot there, unless you want the pot in the picture.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. There you go. Come on up front here, Tim. Us short people get up front, too. Chief, why don't you get in right here? Megan, can you be seen?
Yeah.
Everybody, thank you so very much. We do appreciate it.
We'll see you in a few. We'll feed a lot of...
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you so much.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
I got it.
Moving along, I'm just going to check with the clerk. Am I reading this right, that we have no minutes to approve?
Yes, sir.
All right. Moving on, we're up to item number four, which is the public comment portion of our meeting. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to address city council on any item not on the agenda this evening, feel free to do so at this time. I have no written request, none, right? Barbara?
No.
Nope? Okay. No written requests tonight. All righty, seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda this evening are items five through 14. What is the pleasure of council? Mr. Mayor? Deputy Mayor? I'd like to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor?
Nope, everything looks good.
Councilman Britton?
I think it looks good.
All righty. Anything from my right-hand side?
I had a couple of questions on item nine and 14, and I am still internet impaired at home, so if staff has already responded, I've got to beg your forgiveness this time. I don't know if we should, should we pull them?
Are they brief questions?
I think they, they should be.
Why don't we see if we can?
Okay. On the, on item number nine, this is for the standard operating procedures for the, the purchasing. There is a one, one bid policy that for, I think it's for $1,000 or less, you just have to get one quote. I'm a little bit concerned about just one quote because I don't even get just one quote in my own life doing that. I'd like to see it be two. So I guess it's a question of what, what was the motivation for that?
Oh, yes, Jerry Boot Finance Director, City of Oviedo. We've had the, the one quote policy in effect for several years. In fact, I don't know how many. But the bid threshold right now at $1,000 is so low, we are having a very difficult time trying to get vendors to show up to even provide bids. And they also want to provide a trip charge or a service charge for providing the bid. So that's our challenge that we currently have. We may get one, but we can't get two or three to support the policy, the current policy. It's very difficult.
Okay. Well, that, that at least explains the reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. And you had something on item 14, Councilmember?
On item 14, it looks like we are spending about $95,000 a year to mail our utility bills out, to create them and get them out. So $60,000 of that is in postage. So I guess the question is whether we can, possibly not this time, but over time, maybe within this budget cycle, make a big push to get people not to want to have paper utility bills because that would free up, you know, $30,000 if half the people didn't want them.
Right. We have, since we started the process two or three years ago to push out the e-bills, we've graduated from 700 to 800 now, over 1,000. Every year, we put together a pretty good push to migrate from the paper bills to the e-bills, but there's those folks that just hold on to those paper bills, that want to get them, and it's very difficult to, to force that migration. We just had a contest amongst all the folks in customer service over the last two weeks, and they increased the participation by 75. All the new customers that come in, the folks who come in and apply for the very first time for service are provided the opportunity and explain the opportunity to go to e-billing, okay? Some do, some don't. Some do, some don't. So it's a, it's a very difficult task to get some folks who are used to getting the paper bills over to the e-bills. And I said to Mr. Cobb today, it's not until my generation passes away that we'll get those 100% participation. I think that's a good part of it.
There was a good incentive a few years ago. I got a crepe on a tree when I went to.
Right. We've actually discussed doing that again. And believe it or not, last year, we had 20,000 people actually come in and manually pay their bill at the counter. Exactly. So it's just, it's just what folks are used to, and I believe, council member, we will get there. It's just a process, and it's just time.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
That's it for now.
That's good. All righty. So we can keep the consent agenda as it is?
Yes.
All righty. The motion on the table is to now adopt the consent agenda as presented. All in favor of that motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I didn't have a chance to talk.
I'm sorry, Bobby.
Okay. I just had a couple of questions.
Bobby's so quiet sometimes, I forget.
I just had a couple of questions. And I mentioned this before, we were piggybacking on a lot of different agreements. I really would, would like to see us on some of these going out, I'll forbid ourselves rather than piggybacking, especially with like the first one with the, the tires for the fleet. I mean, this is, it's $50,000, but I mean, there, I think we could, we could at least open it up to some of the local companies, local businesses as well, you know, for a lot of these different things, rather than just piggybacking on the county or the state contracts that they've already entered into or their bid processes. You know, I'm okay with everything on the consent agenda, but I really would like to see us, you know, going out to bid for some of these on our own. And then on the, on number nine, I also, I was looking at, you know, the thresholds, and I had mentioned this before as well, to, you know, the percentages sometimes bother me because, you know, 5% or 10% of a small number is a small number. You know, so I always, I kinda like that, like a minimum dollar amount, so it's the lesser of to do it. So I don't, I mean, I'm okay with it, but that's something that, you know, I think going forward, you know, if we were to, you know, make any changes to this going forward, that would be something I would like to look at. So, that's all I had.
All righty. Anything else from anybody? Hearing none, motion on the table is to adopt. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number 15. It's ordinance number 1657, which is use of fertilizers. Mr. Group, do us the honors.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida relating to the proper use of fertilizers and regulating the proper use of fertilizers by any applicator, providing for definitions, providing for implementing administrative actions such as the adoption of rules, providing for a savings provision, providing for enforcement of families and remedies, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for complications as well as the correction of scrutiny errors, and providing for an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Group, Mr. Cobb.
Mayor, this ordinance is a requirement as part of our National Pollutant Discharge Permit that is issued through the Department of Environmental Protection. The DEP is required that we adopt an ordinance that regulates fertilizers containing nitrogen and/or phosphorus, as well as providing management guidelines for fertilizer application in order to minimize, minimize the negative impacts to our natural water bodies. The county's already adopted their ordinance, and it will become effective on October the 1st. Some of the highlights of this ordinance is that it does provide some exceptions for turf management on active recreation areas. It also, for fertilizers containing nitrogen or phosphorus, they cannot be applied to turf during what is known as the restricted season, which is June 1st through September 30th. Fertilizers containing iron, manganese, and other micronutrients, also referred to as summer blends, can be applied during the restricted time. Fertilizers containing nitrogen that is used during non-restricted season, this is October 1st to May 31st, must contain at least 50% or more of a slow, slow-release nitrogen. This will increase to 65% after three years. Fertilizers containing phosphorus cannot be applied to turf or plants unless a state-certified soil or tissue test verifies that there is a phosphorus deficiency. The use of deflector shields is required when applying fertilizer with a broadcast or rotary spreader, and no fertilizer may be applied within 15 feet of any pond, lake, stream, canal, or other water body, including wetlands. It's recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1657.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. I have no written request to speak on this item. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council on ordinance number Seeing and hearing none, we're going to close the public comment portion and move on to the pleasure of council. Mr. Mayor? Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1657.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor?
No, sir. That's good.
Councilmember?
Well, if the motioner will agree, I'd like to propose a friendly amendment to increase the distance to 30 feet. That would be about 10 regular steps away from a water body. Part of the motivation for this is watching what happened to the water near my house during Irma. 15 feet is about five steps. It's still going pretty steeply downhill. You're almost, I would consider it within the water body in a lot of places that are in Oviedo. But if we did a 10-step rule, then people just take 10 steps out. Maybe you're at the edge of a hill going down, and maybe you're not, but it gives us just a little bit more clarity, so people aren't trying to figure out if they're measuring horizontally or through a triangle, or how they're doing, or just take 10 steps away, 30 feet from where the mean high watermark is, and that will probably accomplish its purpose a little bit better than a lot of the technical language in here.
Mayor?
Hmm?
Mr. Group, quick question for you, sir. This ordinance, was this not crafted from lots of research, state, county, everybody looking at this, and it is, you know, even, you know, and well researched, that a change like this might, might cause us some issues?
Well, I normally wouldn't be able to answer a question like that, but I can tell you I've read the Orange County process, the Seminole County process, and the Sanford process, in terms of getting to this ordinance, and the answer is yes. There's a lot, there was a lot of science and debate about the standards that are in this ordinance. I don't understand them all, but I can tell you there was a lot of debate, and that this was the consensus of that experience.
Well, I just, you know, and I wanted to just address what, you know, councilwoman's concerns, but I'm not, I'm not inclined to change this because of all the science and research that went into it. I mean, if there's some issues down the road as we get into this, I think they'll have to be looked at by all, but, you know, it's kinda like other ordinances that we have throughout the state. You know, you make it different as you're riding through Oviedo, and it confuses businesses and things like that, so I think I would like to just leave this the way it is.
Okay.
Something's better than nothing.
There you go. And Councilman Pollock?
Now, do, does staff have the expertise to regulate this once this gets implemented on, on the, I don't know if this is gonna be code enforcement or police, but are we gonna, are we gonna be able to regulate this once it's there?
It's primarily handled through our stormwater utility staff. And so our stormwater coordinator was very active in the preparation of this ordinance. Mr. Wyatt obviously can give you more background on it, but it'll be primarily handled through the stormwater.
She knows it, she's not here this evening, but she knows it much better than I do. But yes, it would be regulated through stormwater.
Okay. And I'm just gonna go out of order for a second, if everybody doesn't mind. Bobby, just refresh my memory, I remember sitting through, I saw this three or four times, but isn't there a class that the, all the fertilizer folks are going to now through the county?
Yes, I believe there is. Actually, I have a ringer in the audience tonight from the county.
Right. If I remember, there was a class, and then this, this, also, there's a change in the fertilizer that they're putting down, if I remember as well.
Yes.
All right. Help us all understand, so that way we all have a warm fuzzy.
I'm Shannon Watzel, Principal Environmental Scientist with Seminole County's Watershed Management Division, and we've been, the, the group that basically crafted the ordinance along with all of our city partners. But yes, the class you're referring to is actually required from the state perspective. It's the GIBMP, Green Industry Best Management Practices class, that's provided through our ag extension group here locally, and that is a class required for all commercial applicators to take. Residential citizens under this ordinance are encouraged to take the FYN program that's offered as well through the county extension agency.
And if I remember also, there was going to be, and I don't know if it was implemented, I remember it was a point of discussion, that the home improvement stores and the hardware stores where folks usually buy their fertilizer, to have them only carry this summer blend or something? Wasn't that a discussion at some point?
We have discussed quite a bit with regards to the education push that we have already started with regard to the fertilizer ordinance, and then what's more to come. We are not allowed to restrict sales at all, but we have education through like signage programs that we're trying to get out to all the big box stores to let people, when they go to purchase fertilizer, know what's appropriate during the summer, restricted season, and the rest of the year. So yes, that's part of the education campaign we've put together.
The summer blend is gonna have less phosphorus or iron or something?
Summer blend has no nitrogen or phosphorus in it. It's all the micronutrients like magnesium, iron, things that green up the lawn, but don't promote growth.
Does anybody have any questions? All right, thank you, Bobby. And thank you for indulging me in going out of order, but I'll go down to Councilman Britton now.
Yeah, I think you hit the nail on the head. When I look at this, I see two ends of this, or two parts of this. One is the commercial guys, which I think you're taking care of. They oughta know better. So the other is the residential guys that don't know any better. And I think it'd be a nice idea if we could look into some proactive type education. Looks like you've already started that process, but just recommending folks go to a class, I don't think it's gonna get the word out. I think we need to, we need to get the word out on our, on our own from our end and start encouraging this.
And your staff has been really great, and we have a Westside already set up where we're putting all of our education materials and public services and everything we've done so far and we plan to do with people.
Thank you, that's all I got.
Deputy Mayor?
Nope, I'm good.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? And then we, there's one last time.
The only thing I, I would say to, just to piggyback on Councilman Britton, I mean, the do-it-yourselfer on the weekends, I mean, obviously, if you hit, most people getting at Home Depot and Lowe's, if they're trained and they put up signs, people tend to ask in there, that would be a great help too, for compliance. You walk in, most people don't know what to put on their lawn, so have you done anything with them at all, or could you?
That's one of the things we're trying to do. We modeled our ordinance with Bravard and Volusia, and they started reaching out and trying to get training programs in the big box store.
There you go. Great. Thank you so much.
All righty. Anything else for the good of the order? Go ahead.
I won't disappoint. Could we, even though we're passing it with the 15-foot, could we just highly encourage people to do 10 steps away, as the official company line coming from Oviedo?
I, I think the science is there, though, so I don't wanna confuse folks.
And the reason that we're, we went, the state model ordinance actually has only a 10-foot buffer. We increased it to 15-foot, because again, that's similar to what Volusia and Bravard have. And for right now, all of the cities are participating in the county's education program through like the FYN program, so it's a consistent message, but during the education, this ordinance is really education-based. And so during the education process, during the FYN classes and workshops and presentations to HOA groups, we talk about, you know, your specific situation, because some people have steeper slopes, some people have, you know, streams versus lakes, and so, yes, 15-foot is in the ordinance, but we try to encourage where need be a larger buffer. So it's, it's really, we're really focusing on the education component of this ordinance.
Right.
That is good to hear, thank you.
All righty. I'm not asking anymore. Motion on the table is to adopt. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're moving on. We are up to number 16. Let me just catch up here to everybody with ordinance number 1658. Mr. Group?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida substantially revising and amending Chapter 42, Article 2, Code Ordinances of the City of Oviedo for the purpose of establishing additional standards for small wireless facilities and city-owned right-of-way or city-owned utility poles, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflict, separability, complication, correction of scrutiny errors, separability, and an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this year, the state legislature adopted House Bill 687, which dealt with the location of wireless communication facilities and telecommunications towers within public right-of-way. They took the opportunity to place this bill on local government, but they exempted state, state right-of-ways out of it. The bill greatly limits the local jurisdiction's ability to regulate location, design, and other elements of wireless facilities. The council instituted a moratorium on June 19th, 2017, which is effective until the end of this month, and it was to give staff an opportunity to develop adequate regulations for the placement of these facilities within the right-of-way. This ordinance, number 1658, it, it creates registration requirements for wireless providers. It provides definitions based on the state law and design standards. It strengthens the application of seminal standards. It adds additional application and permitting requirements for small wireless communication facilities. It, there is an addition of sufficiency and compliance review to meet state timeframes. The state basically says if you don't act within 60 days, it's automatically approved. There's design standards to maximize our community standards, also aesthetics, and also to address the safety aspect of these facilities being placed within the right-of-way. They do have an opportunity that if there's not an existing pole in the right-of-way, they could place a new pole in the right-of-way. So we're very concerned about sidelines, we're concerned about distance away from travel lanes. There's also a, standards for public art. We have maximum heights of the facilities and utility poles, and then there's also an appeals process, which would go to the city's hearing officer. It's recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1658.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This time, this is a public hearing. Excuse me. I'd like to open it up to the public for anybody who has any comments. I have no written request. Anybody in the audience would like to address us on this item? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor, I think there was a couple of scrutiny errors and an amendment that staff had brought in.
We got an email on that, I think.
Yes. All righty, well, Mr. Group, how would you like me to handle that?
Well, I guess, okay.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I, that slipped my mind.
No, no worries, Mr. Cobb. Everyone's tired. It's been a long trying 10 week, 10 days, excuse me, so no big deal, we'll get through.
There was two.
I forgot Bob twice tonight.
Oh, no. Just have him read it.
There was two really minor, minor amendments that, on page 15, I see instead of 30 slash 15 days, it's corrected to say 15 slash, no, I, perent 15 days. And on page 24, item D, it's another scrutiny issue. I don't even go into it so minor unless you want me to. It's just clarifying, it's purely correct, it's typographical. The, the third proposal, and I think it's generated from Councilmember Sladek, and it, on page 14, there'd be new language that provides electrical services, including any electrical-related functions of the system shall be metered independently from public-owned poles, and shall be the responsibility of the applicant, and the city shall not use or pay any public funds to provide for the operation of any operations facilities of any type of nature. That provision just makes sure that the wireless facilities operator pays their own electric bill, and that the city doesn't subsidize their, their business activity. So if there's a motion to approve the ordinance as proposed to be amended by city staff.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second with the proposed changes. Councilman Pollock, you have the floor?
Looks good.
Looks good. I, I'm a little worried about it, but I think that we'll get through it. I think this is, this was written and crafted very well. Thank you.
Now hats off.
Councilmember?
Hats off to staff for, for all the added detail between last time and this time and appreciate you meeting with me to clarify everything.
Great. Councilman Britton?
Good.
Deputy Mayor?
Just a couple of quick things. So, Mr. Cobb, so I just want to clarify from what I think I'm, I'm reading here. So one of these companies wants to come in to put their 5G stuff out on the poles. They still need to come in, show us their plan and what they want to do, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Even though the state sort of said they, they don't have to with this because we did it within 60 days, they do have to come in and show us.
Well, the state gave us the ability to create a permitting process.
Right.
That was one of the things that they allowed us.
Within the 60 days?
The 60 days is that we have 60 days to act on an application.
Right, okay.
So the, yes, the, the state did give us the ability to create a permitting process. That's what this ordinance does.
Okay. So, so nobody can go up and down Oviedo Boulevard where we have our nice light poles and pop a wood pole in there?
Not without applying and getting approved for it.
Correct. And that would have to come to us if it got past you guys. Do we have some control?
Yes, we have some.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Okay, good. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. I'm fine with this. It's been hashed out a couple of times already, but I'll go up and down the dais one more time. Anything else for the good of the order?
You don't like that 5G stuff?
Well, maybe we will.
A lot of good stuff with that.
All righty. The motion on the table is to adopt ordinance 1658 as amended by Mr. Groot. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First reading of ordinances, we have none. We're going to move on to item number 18. It's our only resolution on the agenda this evening. Let's catch up to it here. And this is resolution number 3467-17. It's a site development order. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us, please?
Ah, yes, Mayor. This is a request for council to approve site development order number 482-17 and architectural design order number 022-17 for the Goddard School Development. The proposed property is located on the east side of State Route 434 at the intersection with Clark Street. The total land area is 1.52 acres. The property is designated downtown mixed use on the city's feature land use map and is down designated mixed use district, historic district perimeter on the city's official zoning map. The applicant proposes the construction of 10,936 square foot daycare facility with a 100, 2,000, with a 1,200 square foot covered recreation area. To comply with the city's comprehensive plan and mobility strategies, the applicant is providing two carpool only parking spaces, a bench and bike racks. The applicant has addressed the city's transportation consultant's comments. The proposed building has two primary facades, the south and the west, one secondary facade, which is the north elevation, and one rear facade, the east elevation. The building has a shingle roof and complies with the requirements of roof modulations. You can, there's a 3D photo and some material board provided right over there. The applicant requests some fenestration deviations for the west and north elevations. All of the building facades have siding, brick and stone and complies with the city's material requirements. The applicant will install a brick buffer wall along the south and east property boundaries, avoiding residential. The applicant requests that the buffer width deviation along the south property line. Also, the applicant requests a buffer composition deviation along the west property line to allow more visibility from the right of way. The different deviations are spelled out for you in the site development order and the architectural design order. The staff reviewed both the site development and the architectural design orders for the requirements of the comprehensive plan and the land development code. They recommend approval with following conditions. The property owner, developer or any successor in interest shall pay the amount of $5,400 into the tree bank prior to the issuance of a site construction type 2 permit for the mitigation of 36 replacement large trees. The property owner, developer, any successor in interest shall pay in the amount of $1,200 into the tree bank prior to the issuance of a site construction level 2 permit for the mitigation of 12 accent trees not installed along Central Avenue due to deviation request. And the third one is the property owner or developer, any successor in interest shall pay the amount of $750 into the tree bank prior to the issuance of a site construction type 2 permit for the mitigation of five large street trees that will not be installed on State, on Central Avenue, State Route 434 due to deviation request. These conditions have been incorporated into site development order 42-17 and architectural design order number 022-17. It's recommended that city council adopt resolution number 3467-17.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, is the applicant present and do you have a presentation? Do you have anything to present?
Mayor, council, thanks for having us. My name is Scott Sheldon and I'm the owner of the Goddard School of Oviedo.
I just needed an address also.
I'm sorry?
Just an address for the record?
240 South Central Avenue. We've been working with, for the past several months with staff to develop what we feel is a, is a great building that has met all of the LDC requirements that we can meet on the site and that they's able to construct the building what we need to have. What we have is a 3D rendering over here that you can see, which material wise meets all the requirements. We do have a couple deviations that we're, we're looking at. One of them is the fenestration requirements, which we have our architect here. Record, she can explain those issues, the deviation for that. And we also have a buffer deviation on the south side, which is due to being able to fit the parking lot in the site with the building as well, due to all the setbacks that are required. Our civil engineer is here as well and he can, he can answer any questions you have on that as well. So Cheryl, do you want to come up here and, this is Cheryl, she's our architect and she'll answer any questions with the, with the fenestration requirements.
Okay. Great, thank you. Are you making a presentation or just answering questions?
I'm here to answer questions.
Okay, I'm going to go to a motion first and then if we need you, we'll call you back up. If you have a presentation, go right ahead.
No, unless there's any specific questions. I had written a letter, I think that was addressed to the board, that had reviewed why we were asking for these deviations.
Excellent. Let me, let's get a motion on the table and then there's questions, we'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can sit. This is a public hearing. I have no written requests. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council at this time? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 3467-17.
Second? I have motion and I have a second. Councilman Britton, you have the floor?
Just a quick question. I'm looking, let me go back to that page with the, with the engineer drawing. What comes to mind is setback from the right of way on Central. Brian, does, does the setback for this facility comply with any future force explaining plans for 434?
Take me just a second, Mr. Britton. I'm trying to pull up the same picture.
It's a little slow. I'm looking at some dimensions and it looks like they're to the end of the right of way and that there's a 30 foot or so, right away beyond that end of the street.
Well, the one thing I can say is that it does comply with the requirement of the, I just lost the picture. There we go. It does, it does comply with the city's land development code requirements. One of the things about trying to look at what it would be for a right of way, a future right of way, not knowing what alignment that DOT would come in with, it would be very difficult for us to make this happen and try to locate the building to accommodate something that we're not really sure what it would be.
Yeah, it just came up. Looks like it's about 28.6 feet from the front of the building to the sidewalk.
To the right of way, yes.
I just don't want to have a building put up and then five or six years or however long it takes, DOT come in and say, oh, we need, we need that space. So that's why I asked the question. And I guess the next question is for Teresa. A lot of deviations in there, but I know that's part of the, the process now. So tell us what, what that means in layman's terms.
So the fenestration, the deviations for the fenestration are really because of the, the type of use, right? Our fenestration requirements are for office and commercial. They are, it's very generic. So it's also for retail. When you have specific uses like dental office, we had in the past, asking for deviations. And in this case for the school, I mean, they don't really require as much fenestration as other uses, as a retail, for instance. So we think that what they provided was in a good balance. I mean, they have, they don't have blank walls, right, in, in any of the facades. So we didn't think there were extreme deviations for, for the architecture.
And you're comfortable with the deviations on the buffers?
And the deviation for the buffers, each one had a justification. So the accent one at the west facade is because they had to reduce the, the buffer. And they had also a fence to protect the kids. So they didn't have as much room to provide the accent trees. So and that they are paying to the tree bank. Everything that they are deviating, they are paying to the tree bank. The south one was because of the parking, that they had to provide the parking over there. So deviations, we look in a case by case, and, and this one we thought that were, made, they made sense. So they are, we are supporting the deviations.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's good.
All right. Councilmember Pollak, you have the floor?
I'm, I'm good with everything. You know, I'm looking through the, all the, the money that's spent into the tree bank and I really want to revisit the, the tree code to see how we can manage that a little bit better. I'm also a little, especially after what, what occurred this past week, I'm a little sensitive to making sure that when we do put trees in some of the right of ways, that they're not going to affect the, you know, as they grow up, that they're not going to affect the, the power, the, the distribution system for the, the power system. So, but other than that, I mean, it looks good. I'm happy with it. So.
Great. Anything else?
No.
Councilmember Sladek, I'll go to you.
Well, you guys know that I have a big hangup about having the same rules for everybody. So seeing deviations of this size, just made me do a double take. So same thing as Councilmember Britton said. I, what I'm curious, and I guess this is a question for the architect, is there any way that you guys could comply with our fenestration requirements? And specifically, there was mentioned in here that there was an illusion or something about the state requirements don't let you have windows lower than 36 inches. I haven't been able to find anything to support that.
Typically, you need to provide some kind of safety glazing, which again is an added cost that we try to prevent to impose.
Okay. So it really is just a cost thing?
Yeah.
So it could be done?
It could be done, but it's, we usually don't like to do that because it's a safety issue for the kids, having glass so low.
So is it, is it because, is there any window that is, if it's like over 36, then it has to be a special kind of glass?
We would, we would have to do tempered safety glass.
Okay. So that's something that could be done, but just as a costing, you prefer not to.
The other, the other issue we have too is we usually provide window treatments on those windows. And if they go to the floor, it's, you know, you have kids crawling on the floor. They're grabbing at the window blinds. It becomes a safety issue with something of that as well.
Okay. Appreciate that. And the other issue, so there, there's the window thing. So that could be, that could be addressed. It's just a shift in cost. And what was the other thing? The doors, windows, west elevation. Yeah, that, that was mainly it. Everything else seemed like there was a pretty good reason that had, that had to do with something other than we just think it would cost more?
But it's, but it's safety. It really comes down to the safety of the kids inside the facility with having glass that low and what we would have to do.
Look at the glass go higher and a little lower, just bigger in general.
Right. So I had looked at how I can make the windows bigger from going higher, wider and lower. And reviewing the design of the building from a structural standpoint with my engineer, by making the windows wider and taller, we were having some problems making the sheer wall designs work because the openings were becoming so big. So that was another problem that we were looking at and making it work. Plus the scale and the, the look of the building, it, it wants to have this continuous window cell with this masonry base around the building. It just goes with the architecture of the design of the building.
Okay. So percentage wise, we're looking at 20% deviation there plus 13% more? What's the total for windows? There's, there's all these numbers.
Yeah. So on the south, on the south elevation, we were required to have 595 square feet and we had 420 square feet.
Okay. So is there a happy medium where the windows could be slightly larger?
Right.
And this is like, I just have this hangup. Everybody needs to follow the rules.
Yeah. So when we did our first application, we were even more below the requirement. And I added a lot of windows that are actually, I hate to call them this, fake windows because the rooms have so much equipment on the walls that you, that when you're inside the room, there's, you don't even know that there's a window there from the outside. So we were creating these fenestration requirements to get it better based on your ordinance.
Could we do that perhaps, like frame the windows to make them larger and have them not be larger?
Again, that became an issue with the structural design because.
Well, if it's just, and maybe this is a question for staff, what could we do to get it to fit in the rules? Maybe nobody else cares though. I guess that's a question down the, down the dais.
We don't. Staff has looked at this for how many months. It's a good compromise.
All right. Well, then we'll, we'll call it a day for that. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Deputy Mayor?
I just have a quick question. The 12 trees that are supposed to go along Central that you're deviating, all 12 because of future and existing proposed utilities, can somebody clarify for me that that is correct? Like if they plant those trees, it's going to mess up the power lines of future stuff in there? Does anybody know the answer to that? You know, missing 12 trees in a historic part of town kind of doesn't sit well with me.
These are 12 accent trees. There are additional trees to the canopy trees. And, and these are, the reason for deviating is for, because of the existing utility lines.
Okay.
That they have that.
Even if they were inclined to put them in, we couldn't put, put anything in there?
That was the reasoning. Yeah. Because of the utility lines. So.
But you said accent trees. So the.
Accent trees are additional trees, are medium sized trees, the lower trees. Yes.
So the other trees.
The canopy trees, sorry.
Right. Okay. All right. That's all. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I follow up on that?
Yeah, right.
Just, just real quick. So, so what you're saying is, is that they could not put these trees, if they did, it would, it would affect something. So we're penalizing them because, for something that they can't control?
Well, and I agree with you. The, the landscape for the, the new downtown has to be revised. So the accent trees are trees that we have been having issues in the past. We'll have a good discussion on the landscape because also there is, you know, a, a reason when trees cannot be put on site, that the city will use the money to balance, you know, the environment, planting trees elsewhere. And that has been all, our restoration plan has been based on that, that we collect the money and we plant the trees elsewhere where, you know, they will survive, they can grow, they will not impact utility lines. So there is also a reason for that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Well, I mean, looking, looking at the plan, I mean, I, I understand the deviations. I also understand why we don't like deviations, but I think there's plenty of mitigation for the deviations. But I, I can't believe that nobody to date hasn't brought up the obvious flaw here and that's this lining up with Clark Street. I mean, you, you, you're creating a four-way intersection at Clark, which is already a dangerous intersection. And we're just creating more issues here. There's no turn lane provided in the center. There's, there's no deceleration lane. There's no, we, we, we created an intersection that there's accidents at weekly or at least monthly, it seems. I mean, I know two people who are, their cars totally wiped out at that intersection and we're sticking a daycare there. You know, no offense, guys, but this is flawed. So I don't know who wants to take me up on this one, but there's no way in heck I'm voting for this the way this layout is right now. Anybody? Applicant? It doesn't have to be my staff. This is your project. You come tell me while I'm wrong.
John Wolfarth, Appian Engineering, 2221 Lee Road. Based on the, the number of trips, we're only about 68 trips in the peak hour. And the DOT did not require any, any additional decelerating. It doesn't trip that threshold.
Let me ask you a question. You have 160 students. How do you get 68 trips?
That's peak hour. That's so, peak AM, peak PM. So that's the most trips per hour.
Let me re-ask the question to you. When do most of your children get dropped off?
Morning and night.
All right, morning and night. So in the morning, you're going to tell me only 68 parents are going to come drop off 160 kids?
That's the peak hour.
Monica?
Hi, Erin Witt. I'm with the franchising company for Goddard. I'm the site development manager, so I go around and help everyone get approval.
Wait, I wasn't done with him, so I want him to go back up.
That's fine. So what happens with our drop off is we actually see a peak from about 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM. So within...
That's the peak of rush hour.
But within that, so if you take the maximum capacity of our school, approximately 20% of those will be siblings. So two or more kids will come in one car. In that same day, somewhere between 10 and 15% will either be absent because they're sick or on vacation, something's going to keep them home from school. So while we'd love our schools to be at maximum capacity every day, we normally see a maximum daily enrollment of about, around 80%. So yes, our normal trip capacity will be what Mr. Wolfarth...
I understand the math, but do you understand that this is a dangerous intersection to begin with? That the road is being widened right to the north, it's not being widened down there at this particular time? We just created a four-way intersection to access your site?
Well, the amount of trips are generated from the north and the south, there's very few going across that intersection. And if you have an offset intersection, it's actually more dangerous than having the intersection lined up because you have people trying to cut across and shoot over. And based on the size of the site, you really can't put the driveway, if you put it in the middle, that'd actually be more dangerous. And a decel lane, DOT wouldn't approve a decel lane there because it doesn't, it's not warranted. The speed's only 35 through there.
Well...
And it's a DOT road.
I can respect that DOT didn't ask you for it, but I'm going to ask you for it because it's our residents who are going to be accessing this school. And I know the amount of times that the chiefs respond to accidents at this intersection, so why don't you have a seat and let me talk to them?
Okay.
Chief Chudnow? You and I have talked about this intersection. Can you please enlighten us all here?
Mayor, I have to apologize, I was outside, I'm talking to some citizens, so you're going to have to...
We understand that. This is the intersection at Clark Street and 434. What the applicant is looking to do is put the driveway for their new school, which is wonderful and beautiful and needed, directly across and creating a four-way intersection. So now at that intersection, you'll have parents jumping straight across 434 to try to get to Clark, you're going to have the folks trying to make the left on Clark, you're going to have the issue with people trying to slow down, make a right into the school, there's already rut tracks of people trying to go around, people making left-hand turns. So my question to you is, is that you've responded to many different accidents at this location, fender benders, total cars, enlighten us. I mean, you might not have the exact numbers now, but just give us your feeling here.
At this type of intersection, any time you can put in a deceleration lane takes those vehicles off of the main roadway and limits those possibility of rear end crashes.
Correct. And weren't you talking to the state at one point in time about adding a center lane to this section of the roadway for turns? Didn't we have that conversation or am I just dreaming it?
We've had a couple of conversations along that street, along that section of the road about decel and turn lanes, but especially those making right-hand turns, taking those cars off of the main road into a deceleration lane, it limits those possibility of those rear end crashes and delays in traffic going northbound.
All right. Well, anybody have any other questions with the chief? Thank you, chief. You know, guys, you got a great project here, I have no issue with your project, but for me personally, that driveway's an issue. You know, unless you want to mitigate out there on 434 somehow, I can't support this. It's just going to turn into a nightmare.
I was just, I was looking down 434, and I couldn't find any decel lanes anywhere along State Road 434.
Right, because everything that's there was built back in the day.
The townhouse was recently approved, and that has, I think, double the amount of trips that this school does, and they were not required to do a decel lane.
The townhouse doesn't have Clark Street right across from it.
It has an intersection about a block away from coming from...
But it doesn't have Clark Street right across from it. Did you ever research how many accidents have been at Clark Street and 434, fender benders? Would you like me to continue this and so you can go do that and come on back to us?
No.
No? Okay. Just, I'm not trying to argue with you, trust me, I'm just giving you my opinion. And I might not even have the support of the whole council here, guys, so don't just go by what I'm asking you.
Would you be willing to limit the exit to a right turn out only? So there's not the straight across and there's not the left turns?
I'd like you to make it a right in and a right out only.
I have to defer to the applicant.
I don't know, staff will...
I guess what, the question I would have would be, is how do we predict, when we're not local per se to the exact neighborhood, what is a dangerous intersection and what is not? I mean, we weren't aware that this is a dangerous intersection. My in-laws live on the intersection. I've never had them complain once about that intersection. There's no other way to configure the site. We can't move the driveway down to the other end, the site just doesn't work. We did look at that. It's just the only place for the driveway is where it is, or the building doesn't fit.
Mr. Mayor?
Let me just ask one question. You said your parents live there?
Yeah, they live behind the Montessori school, my in-laws.
Behind the, oh, they live down Clark.
Yeah, right off Clark and Graham.
Right, okay. So I'd be very surprised if they don't know about all the accidents that happen out there. But anyway, council member?
I'm liking this right in, right out idea. My question, and I guess it's for the applicant, is how, and all of us to think about brainstorm together, how are we going to get people from this side of Oviedo this way and into the school? My kids went to Oviedo Montessori, so this trek and that intersection, I'm very familiar with it. I don't find it to be particularly dangerous, but my threshold for danger is high. I bike them there. So what would your plan be to get people, like how would the traffic pattern work if we were to do a right in, right out? Could you make that work?
A right in, right out?
Right in, right out.
Well, of course it could work. It's just, it's going to be an inconvenience to people coming from certain directions of town, depending on which way you're coming from.
I'm not quite sure if staff likes that.
Yeah.
I see Mr. Cobb over there just getting...
Maybe a left in at the far, the one that's not lined up with Clark, because there's two driveways. If we did a left in, a left or right in at the far south one, and then right out across from Clark, that seems like, would that address your concerns?
We're not traffic engineers, I just look at this.
Agreed.
I see problems.
What about a no-through way? I mean, is that the concern? Is people leaving the school, going into Clark, crossing the double road, and then same thing from opposite direction?
Here's my concern, and I guess you've never spent any time out at the intersection. Have you noticed on your property, the ruts that are in the road?
Yes, I have.
That's from cars stopping on 434, making a left on Clark to get down to the business district of Oviedo and all the other businesses that are back there off of Clark, and the impatient drivers come from the south with, you know, going around them. So what's going to continue to occur here is you're going to have those cars stacking up, you're going to have your parents trying to make a right into your place, you're going to have your parents trying to come out and make a right or shoot across Clark, it's just going to make it worse. It's going to exacerbate an already difficult situation. So there's got to be some mitigation here, and I'm not even sure right in, right out's the answer. I don't know what the answer is. The answer may be that you need to provide some sort of turn lane in the center of 434, I don't know. But what I do know is that the way it is now, I'm not comfortable with it. I just, it's going to make a bad situation a worse situation. And, you know, we run into this all the time with folks, you know, building things on Mitchell Havoc Road, they all have turn lanes. We made many different projects, put them in. So, you know, you're not the first one that we brought this up to, and I'd like to work with you. And I don't even know if the rest of the council wants to go along.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm not sure we're going to get there tonight, and I think it's in your best interest if we can table this for a couple of weeks and bring it back. There's no issue with your project or your deviations, but I hate to say it, but I think the mayor's got a good point. I hate to agree with him, but...
You know, I don't have a problem tabling it. What will be the action items between now and two weeks? Are you going to look at it on y'all's end, or do we need to come back with something?
I think it would require you to get with staff and come up with an idea that works. And like the mayor says, we're not going to figure it out tonight, right in, right out, turn lane, I don't know what the right answer is.
But let's just figure something out that improves that intersection. You have a right to use it. I don't have a problem with the, you know, well, excuse me. The code will allow you to use the intersection, we just have to make the intersection safe. You're going to need, you know, a turn lane coming down from the north, because now what we're going to do is we're going to create an issue of those parents coming from the north, trying to make a left across all of the traffic in the morning trying to come up, and we're going to create the same issue that we have from the southbound movement now on the northbound.
You know, and the right in, right out, I think is going to have an unintended consequence.
Yeah, people are going to be making U-turns.
They're going to be driving up Graham and making the left down the street from the school to get the right in. So there's got to be a way to engineer this. I think you guys are pretty smart. I just don't think we're going to get there tonight.
It's like October 2nd is the next meeting opportunity.
All right, is there a contract issue that you're waiting on?
Yeah, of course. I mean, we're scheduled to break ground this Friday.
So if FDOT comes back and they don't allow the improvement, I mean, what are our options? It's a state road.
We're going to find out. I don't know. Go to the FDOT and tell them the council has an issue with this, and tell them the city staff was raising an issue. I don't know.
Brian, who would be the best staff member to work with them, coordinate this with them? Would it be Teresa or would it be Bobby?
It would be Mr. Wyatt. Quite honestly, the question you're asking is one that needs a traffic engineer. And obviously, for their own protection, they would want to engage their own traffic engineer. But a conversation with the folks at DOT is also vital because it is their road, they're the ones who issued the connection.
Yeah, I understand that. You know, flyover would work too. Who wants to build a flyover?
We have our city engineer behind us, he wants to address this.
Mr. Mayor, I've looked at this. This situation is challenging from a turn lane standpoint. In order to squeeze something in out there, you're going to have to relocate all the overhead electric. And it's, this one's a tough one, tough nut to crack. So I'm just, from an engineering standpoint...
You're talking about a decel lane?
Yes, sir. Well, any lane you put in is going to have, is going to squeeze the lanes outward. And it's limited right of way, you've got overhead power, you've got a five-foot sidewalk, connectivity needs to stay there, you've got the strangest drainage I've ever seen off of a gravity wall off to the east side. It's a challenge. And I'm a big fan of the lanes, believe me. I'll advocate for them every time, but this one's going to be, this one's going to be hard.
And I'm a huge fan of folks' property rights and able to develop, but I'm not a huge fan of folks' property rights if we're just going to exacerbate an existing problem. I mean, the second I looked at this thing and I opened it up, I...
Oh, I think going back to DOT and asking the question is a good start. I'm just saying from a, when you've got limited right of way, you can only fit so much in, even if you narrow the lanes down. So it's just, it's a challenge.
Well, let me just see what the council would like to do, and I'll start with Councilman Britton. Councilman Britton, what do you think with this?
Well...
And I'll go up and down, everybody will get a shot.
I don't know. I don't go down there that often during rush hour. I try to avoid it. I certainly don't make left turns onto 434. And I honestly don't have reliable statistics on the accidents that are out there. I know there have been some. I guess the best thing would be to try to approve this somehow with some sort of arrangement or agreement to go back and look at what we can do about ingressing and egress, because that's really what this is all about, how to get in, how to get out. Whether they got to have a cop out there maybe in the morning in direct traffic or whatever, I'm not sure what the answer is.
Okay. Councilmember Sladek? I'll just ping pong back.
So to what extent do we have discretion to require additional lanes and stuff? Is this a situation where we have that level of wiggle room? Or like they meet the code, it's quasi judicial, and there we are? Is that this situation on this one, Mr. Group?
They're asking for a lot of deviations we don't have to grant.
This is true.
I'm sorry, Mr. Group.
No, that's correct. To deny you have this site provision in the land development code or some public safety rationale for denial, when you get into that area of deviations, then you just can basically say that deviation is too much and is not, you know, is not advanced in public health safety or welfare or something like that. The mayor's right, when you get into the area of deviations, you have a lot more flexibility than you would like on a flat or something like that.
Okay, so it's because of the deviations that we can just put the kibosh on this?
Now, if you focus on a particular traffic engineering issue, that, you know, you need to develop what the problem is with the intersection.
Okay, thank you. So it sounds like we do have latitude to do that. Kind of stinks to have you guys hoping to break ground on Friday.
Bob?
Let me just go up and down to this.
Councilman Bob?
We already know that there's a problem here at this intersection, and understand that it would, this would make the problem worse. Has there been any thought on a solution to the existing problem before this? To maybe put a median there and not allow left turns onto Clark? To put a four-way stop there? I don't know. Has there been any...
It's DOT, it's their jurisdiction.
So we can't do anything? We would have to bring it to DOT?
Not without going to the land, basically, getting their support.
Okay.
Let me move along. I'll see if the deputy mayor's got a course. Deputy Mayor? Well, you know what, I've been sitting here for a long time, and I will tell you, I've never, you know, lots of people ask for deviations, you know, there's some heavy deviations in here, 200 feet here, 300 feet there, I mean, that's fine, whatever, but you're right, it is a state road. It's not our road, but it's our citizens', and that's a historic part of town, and something really should be done with it. I mean, the tree issue, you know, I would have preferred them out there, but you can't do it, you're mitigating, and that's fine. But, you know, one thing I'm tired of doing is just saying, well, we'll just do it and let it go, it'll be easy. I think you come back in two weeks and try to figure out something to make that a little more safe. That's what I think. You know, you have a lot of kids going there, you've got the little school, you know, down the road from it, you know, let's make it right. It's a nice looking building, project doesn't look bad at all, but those are some valid concerns with the traffic. And guess what? Your phones won't be ringing, our phones will be ringing. We saw our phones ring with just 40 houses that they're building there that we had to deal with for months. And now we're putting a school there, so we at least got to get that right. So I would suggest that you come back in two weeks and figure out a plan to make this work, and I agree with the mayor. I'm not sure what that is, but the way it is certainly is not safe, and you do get a lot of calls for accidents and stuff there. So I would say let's have the professionals sit down and try to come up with something before we approve it, and we'll talk about it at the next meeting. Before we impose anything upon you, it does seem like there's consensus of the council from the discussion you just heard, do you continue this to October 2nd? Have your traffic engineers sit down with DOT and our engineers, and just see if we can come up with some sort of plan, or come up with some rationale why something can't work? It's a problem.
We'll do it.
Sure?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
We'll sit down with them, and we'll be back in two weeks.
All right. Who motioned and who seconded?
The guy motioned and Bob seconded.
You amend your motion to continue this item till...
I'll amend the motion to continue this for two weeks.
Two weeks?
I agree.
Motioner, seconder, agreed. Motioner, seconder, agreed. Mr. Group, do you have any issue with our continuance?
Not at all. Can I ask the applicant a question real quick?
Sure.
Are, are you under a contractual obligation to commence construction by Friday?
We have finance, financing ties and, and quite a bit of contractual obligations. Yeah. I mean, there's, there's site where contractors who have mobilized resources, ordered material, things like that. Unexpected. I mean, this is a curveball to us.
I think it might be helpful to make a finding that the city council had substantial concerns relative to the safety of the intersection, and it wasn't based upon the applicant's motion or request to have the continuance. It was based upon your concerns as to traffic circulation and safety.
That's, that's a fair- Motioner, agree?
I agree.
Seconder, agree?
I agree.
There you go.
If I could ask a question, Mr. Group. Does this help with relieving your burden? I'm guessing that that's, does this help relieve their burden? Like this gets them out of some stuff possibly? Is that what you're thinking? You know, the financial-
Well, what I, what I was thinking, quite frankly, is that, and I don't think you meant it this way, but it was almost like the applicant was asking for a continuance. That was not what was going on. And if he was asking for a continuance, which he was not, that could have prejudiced his contractual obligations vis a vis your lending institutions, contractors alike. This was a continuance, as I have understanding, that it was necessitated by the concerns of the city council.
Correct.
That's right.
That's right.
Is it appropriate if we could maybe approve something that says we're okay with what, what was submitted as far as the plans and table the-
I think that's apparent from the comments that were made from the dice. I don't think you need to do that. I think if you add that finding that I just suggested, that will help the applicant very much, whether or not you prove it or not in the ultimate, ultimately.
I think it'd be worse if he goes out and starts.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
It's been imposed by the council. That, that, that should help.
All right.
All right. Motion on the table is an imposition by the council for the public health, safety, and welfare of the intersection to continue this item until our next meeting at October 2nd. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. All righty, guys. See you in a couple of weeks. Discussion items, we have nine. Mr. Cobb, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one, one thing that I would like to do is, I didn't get to do, I didn't do this earlier and I should have. I wanted to thank Mr. Booth and Ms. Jones. This was their first budget that they've done. They obviously had some big shoes to fill, and I think they filled them quite well. And I'd also like to recognize Ms. Rodriguez and the other many employees, directors, managers, supervisors, and even frontline employees who participated in the preparation of our budget this year. It was a true team effort. Everybody pitched in. And would also want to thank council as well because you all, you were active with the budget, in your participation, and you gave us good guidance as we went along. We came up with some, we came up with a lot of different ideas, and you all absorbed them, gave me a lot of good guidance. And I'd also like to echo all of the kudos, the kudos tonight to our Mercy Management team. This was, the way I put it to some folks was it wasn't Matthew, wasn't as bad. It was worse than Matthew, but not as bad as Charlie. And we-
Charlie was tough.
It was tough. But this one, this one was, this one was tough was because we couldn't get a beat on it. We couldn't really see where it was going until it was upon us. And so, but our staff in all departments pulled together and really worked hard, even trying to get, getting Duke, taking Duke by the hand and walking them around the community when they really didn't have to do that. And also the coordination of the county as well. So I want to echo those kudos to our Mercy Management program. That's all I have, Mayor.
That is awesome. Thank you, Brian. Mr. Group, you got anything for us tonight?
Nothing for the good of the world to receive, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. I'll just be brief and quick. I mean, we've all beat up on, on good old Irma. Maria looks like she's turning. The chief would retire tomorrow if it doesn't, so let's hope it does. You know, and just get our city back to normalcy. I mean, you know, today was the first day. Everybody was back to work. Kids are back in school. All the moms were happy. Most folks have power again, so it's just a return to normalcy. And, Mr. Cobb, I did notice there was an email sent right before our meeting about, we have a public dump site now for the City of Oviedo residents?
Yes. Mr. Wyatt or Chief Wyatt, I may want to let them come up and-
Whomever would just like to spread the good word.
Oh, come on.
Ah. Hey, Chief, you know what the best part about this is? I mean, even though you'll oversee the cleanup, it's really all going to fall on Joseph because that's who we're going to be calling.
Joe's got his head down.
Yeah, Joe, yeah, Joe's not even acknowledging us.
We, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we, our resident debris drop-off is basically the same location as where the debris hauler is bringing. It's just on the, it's just separated from the hauler's debris. And we basically have, we'll have the same entrance off of Evan Street, and we'll bring residents in. We are going to check for ID to make sure they are residents. I mean, we can't have everybody come in in sandbags with one thing, but if we take everybody's debris, the whole place will be covered.
So we're only taking City of Oviedo residents debris?
Yes, sir.
So you have a big blue and a big green garbage can. You can bring the debris there.
Correct. Yes, sir. And right now, it's only vegetative debris. It's not fencing. We're not set up for that. Only vegetative debris.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on, on the vegetation? For, for normal stuff, for like Republic, if you're supposed to bag it, are we supposed to be bagging it plastic or not bagging it plastic?
Well, normal leaves and twigs and such, yeah, you would still bag it in plastic.
You can bag it in plastic? That seems counterintuitive. But that's-
Normal, normal yard waste, normal yard trash.
Okay.
I've bagged it at my own house, you know, mini bags.
Hey, I think Republic's picking up the bags. Is that my, I'm just-
Yes, sir. Normal yard waste. He's nodding yes.
Okay, so Republic's going to pick up the bags and the yard waste, and the debris hauler's going to pick up all the big limbs and big piles. And if people happen to pile everything up outside, they'll pick that all up?
Not if it's commingled. It needs to be separated.
I, I meant vegetative stuff.
Yes, sir.
And who's going to take, because I did bag a little bit, but a lot of residents put things in cans. Who's going to take that? No plastic involved?
Republic?
Republic. Okay. So I should dump all my cans out of my pile and make, make Councilmember Slater very happy?
Yes.
Okay.
What about construction debris, fences and stuff?
Separate pile. It's not going to be, what, second or third? Probably third?
Yeah, well, well-
Go ahead. There's a, there's a lot of stuff out there. I just want to be able to tell people how long they're going to have to wait to get it.
Just so we have all the information. Yeah. The intent of the, the program is, is we're going to take all the woody debris, and we're going to bring it to the Public Works yard, and we're going to sustainably incinerate it there. The fencing has arsenic in it. It's going to be a discreet load. We'll have it, we'll advertise a, a run for that. We'll pick it all up and we'll haul it directly to Seminole County landfill. If you were, if we were to stage it at the public work site, we would pay the contractor to haul it to the public work site, then we would pay them to haul it to the landfill. The idea is we do want to do it one pay. We want to do it the most economically and the, the most efficiently for the city.
All righty. Any other questions? Thank you, Bobby. Oh, I'm sorry. Bob, did you have one?
I look forward to that.
Bob, you have to speak up. Not a frog. My eyes are on the side of the camera.
The, for the debris pickup, is there a limit to how much you can drop off? Like if I was to help my neighbors out and bring it over to, to Evan Street, that's-
There's no limit as far as I've seen in our instructions so far. Just have to be a city, city resident, which, of course, no.
Are you a city resident?
Well, if, if he's not, we have an election if we don't.
For side of the road stuff, is there a, a size limit? Because I've seen entire trees just picked up. There's no limit. Okay, excellent.
All righty. Keith, any more questions?
No more.
Deputy Mayor? Bob? Now I'm going to get to your reports.
No, I'm good. I'm good with those.
Any more questions?
No, no more questions.
Chief, do you want to answer?
Just the hours of operation. The contractor that we've hired will work from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM every day of the week. The site for citizens is available from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We have city staffing that has to be there on the site as well, and that's purpose for it. We also have a monitoring company that we've engaged that is issuing the work tickets and so forth for the trucks. So we are, is positioning ourselves for FEMA reimbursement. We were just notified at 5:00 this evening. Never seen this before, but anyways, we'll take care of it. We have to provide some very important documentation. Real quickly, tomorrow morning gets transmitted up to the state. We, it's all in place. But I can tell you, this team is well-prepared. You're going to get debris complaints, rest assured. Just know, we're going to get all over town. You can funnel those things to us, and we'll address them. If there's some particular issue, Joe can go research it and see if something needs to be addressed, so.
You're missing the silver lining here.
Yeah.
Because when we get those complaints, we're giving them his cellphone number now, not yours.
Yeah, because I'm going to demobilize the EOC in about a week, so.
Is that everything?
Chief, that drop-off site that we set up on Evans, that, just to clarify, is only for vegetative. People can't bring the broken fences and construction debris and stuff. Just vegetative stuff.
We're advertising just vegetative debris at this time.
Gotcha. I think, I'm pretty sure it said in the email that we sent out, if I remember. All righty. Well, that's the end of my report. We'll go on to Councilmember Pollock.
All right. This question's for Drew. Can we make a vent out of this burning? Like a big bonfire?
Come on, Drew. You can, you can sell-
Okay, this, this is the reason-
Burning at Oviedo on the park.
This is the reason, no. This is the reason I ask, because my neighborhood, as you know, is right there. And I've got to try to sell this to my, my neighbors. You know, maybe a, you know, small little, little bonfire where they can-
We're going to save them $400,000 bucks.
Huh?
Against large bellies and jockeys.
I, I don't know. I was, I, I don't know. I, I mean, because I'm, I'm trying to figure out how I'm going to sell all the smoke over my neighborhood right now. So.
The burning is done. We're going to air, curb, air incineration.
Oh, okay.
So there could be days where we restrict their burning as well if the environment's not allowed.
Okay.
We're more of a positive contact. We'll watch it carefully.
Okay, all right. And I just want to reiterate, I mean, the, the hard work you guys have done and taken all my questions and, and responded nicely to. I appreciate it. And, you know, I, I watched Lars yesterday running around, because my neighbors that live directly across the street from me, their power, all of our power got restored on Monday. There's, they had an issue and they lost power on Wednesday. And they weren't able to be brought back till this morning. Lars were diligently the whole time trying to get Duke over there, and they just, they just wouldn't, wouldn't come. Along those notes, I would, I would ask to, I, I kind of want to, to get, dig in a little bit deeper with our, our Duke and our FPNL contracts. I don't know when the renew, if there's, there's renewal dates on them, what the provisions are, if there's a provision in order to purchase our system like Winter Park did. I definitely would, would, would like to, to look at that from that standpoint. FPNL, their, their response, they, they got everybody up quickly. I was a little disappointed with Duke's response in general. I mean, I know it was a statewide issue, but, but there were, there were just things that were done that, that I feel like they, they could have been done a lot better. And they, to me, they, they relieved too many crews from Oviedo before, before the job was done, and they didn't come back and finish the job. So I definitely would like to look at that. Other than that, I'm good.
I think our franchise agreement comes up in like 2030, because we renewed that when I was first elected.
Yeah, it was, uh-
That was way back.
Way back, early 2000s.
That would have been like 2002-ish. And they're 30 years, aren't they? Aren't they, Mr. Group?
It was, uh-
Mr. Group, aren't franchise agreements for the electric utilities 30 years, if I remember?
That's a typical length. There, there has been a great deal of interest in utility companies lately to extend them, so maybe there's an opportunity to reopen and start talking about it.
Okay. Yeah. Councilmember, oh, Hanlon at the time was a huge advocate of us taking it all over. And wasn't, wasn't in the cards at the time, but, Bob, anything else? I'm sorry.
Oh, there was, we talked about the dump site. The parking, there was an issue about parking by the Outback. I, I've driven by since then, and I haven't seen anything. Has that been resolved?
Or addressed?
Councilman, that's something we looked at. Technically, the, if they park off the roadway there, they're legally parked for the most part. However, we have had contact with the, the general manager at Outback, and we're working on a, a permanent solution as best we can.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anything else, Councilmember?
Please get some rest, guys. I know y'all have been working hard. I, I'm looking at Lars over there. He's ready to fall asleep.
That's all right. He has his retirement present, so he's happy. All righty. Deputy Mayor Hankin, you're up.
No, just a couple of things. I think you've all said it already, but I just want to say it again. You know, through this past week, especially making multiple trips in to visit our troops in the EOC, I mean, to walk in there at, at all different hours and, you know, see the eyes wanting to close, but, you know, just keeping them open and watching over the city. I mean, both chiefs, their staff. I mean, it's really amazing when, when disaster strikes that it's just seamless. It just goes into effect. Everything works out good. I mean, I just can't be more proud of all of you as a, as a, you know, just a citizen here for the job you all do. It's not easy. I said it a couple of days before when we were cutting the river at Outback. Took a picture with the chief, and I said, this guy is going to have a couple of rough weeks, and he has. But really, I mean, we're the envy of this area for the response, and that doesn't come easy. Public Works, you know, getting 60-some-odd lift stations working in that fierce weather is not easy. And that weather was fierce. As you all know, I got caught in a little microburst getting medicine from my dad, who tells me in the middle of the storm, he forgot his medicine. Drove out there. Chief, do I got a window? 10 minutes. Go. Going was great. Coming back, that was the scariest drive. So that was some rough stuff. And, and Chief, I forgot to tell you, getting caught in that, driving back out, Chief Chud, now you'll appreciate this. One of your guys was right out there, just sitting there, watching over in these deplorable conditions. So, I mean, Oviedo, you know, big, great job. And to our council members here, each and every one of you, I mean, taking the time to field all the calls and going out. I mean, just a bang-up job. And, and to this guy here, he's been doing it forever, for a long time. I mean, as a citizen, to go on Facebook and stuff and see the very detailed things that sometimes, having sit next to him for 12 years, sometimes there's, there's not a lot that goes by me, but the stuff that he knows and is communicating to the whole city in a disaster makes people feel good. So Dominic did a great job with that. So we're in good hands. And hopefully this Maria thing curves out and, but really, I am very proud to be here. I always say in an emergency, there's no place I'd rather be than the City of Oviedo. And this is from a New York boy, who is, New York is a great city, but you guys do it really well. So congratulations, and let's not have any more of these. Let's put another 13, 14 years like between Charlie and Matthew and this one behind us. So, good job.
Thank you, Steve. That was very nice of you. Council? I'm sorry, Chief?
I could just add to Mr. Cobb's comments. Every single department plays a vital role in the success of this project. HR, finance, parks and rec staff, it just all works very seamlessly together. But I, I don't want any department to not get acknowledged for their efforts.
Absolutely. No, Chief, we know, I think the mayor said it before, we have 300 very dedicated employees, and, you know, it, it's all, it's all a big chain, and the links are all very strong. And, you know, like I said, when you get comments that we see on Facebook and emails to this city, "I wish I lived here," the response is incredible. And, and honestly, you know, when, when, when times come, there's five of us, but I always feel like in an emergency, it's better that somebody like, like Dominic handles it, because he does it well. That's why he gets to sit in the middle, because he does it well, and I don't want to do it. And I don't think anybody else wants to either, but-
Anybody, anybody who wants- Anybody, anybody who wants to take over my Facebook account, feel free.
Okay.
That's fine.
Good job, everybody.
Steve, that was very kind of you. Thank you. But it is a team effort, and I'm just glad I'm not dealing with Spectrum. I'll leave that to Councilmember Slade. So, she, she has taken that one on. It's all yours. But, uh, you're up?
Uh, well, my, I, good job to everybody, but special thanks to Public Works. Uh, in my book, if, if, uh, you don't have power, a hundred years ago, who cares if you don't have power? And internet, I, I feel highly inconvenienced, but I have taken that up as my special thing. I call every day and tell everybody when they should consider calling. But, uh, you need clean water. And if toilet doesn't flush, that's a really big problem. Uh, thank you for not failing, uh, our city on that. Uh, and I, I think Joe G.'s in there somewhere, too, or maybe he left. Um, I did not procure any water for this event, uh, and I kept telling everybody, "Public Works is gonna make it happen." And you guys did. High five. That was awesome. So hopefully, everybody will keep on, uh, trusting that we'll come through with clean water. And everybody else on Power, awesome job.
That's it.
Keith, you're the last one.
Okay. Indulge me a little bit. I got a few administrative things. One is...
No, no problem. Before you start indulging, the 8 o'clock update on Maria has it even further out right now, so...
All right. Let me know when you're ready.
I, I think I'm done. Thank you.
All right. Uh, real quick, CSBG has a meeting, uh, that's Community Service Block Grant Advisory Committee for the newbies. I'm just telling you that because one day you'll, you'll probably be, uh, doing that, uh, that function. But they're gonna meet on Thursday over in the, the county. Uh, I want to take a different tact about how the citizens react to this. And I know, staff, you guys did a great job. Uh, Bobby, I gotta, I gotta call at 12 o'clock, uh, Sunday night. A guy's, uh, warned his house is gonna flood. And Bobby, I think you guys have taken care of that. They didn't flood, but they got close. That's a, that's a lesson learned. Uh, but I'll just tell you that, uh, Friday and Saturday, we've got two new neighbors. Uh, I maybe spoke to them twice since they moved in. Uh, they ponied up. We have elderly people on our block. We have, uh, single moms. And no one complained about helping anyone. And that, that, to me, is a, a real tribute to the, the city. We don't need a pat on the back, but, uh, when folks come together, you know, I'm out of tapcons. How do I get this lady's boards up? Out of the woodwork comes guys with, with handfuls of tapcons for us. So, uh, I think that's a, that's a characteristic of this city that, that came out in Charlie. Um, and I'm kinda, I'm not gonna mention it specifically, but I saw an email about someone who's trying to make a bigger deal out of that than what it, it should be. It's just the stuff we do because that's the kind of people we are. And we don't need to wear a hat and a t-shirt to, to show that, that's what we do. So I'm, I'm gonna get off of that. Lars, I'm gonna single you out because you did what, what the state had to come around and tell everyone else to do. You went and checked on the elderly. You went and checked on the, uh, assisted care facilities, and made sure they were okay before anyone had, had, uh, sense to tell everyone else to do it. So, kudos to you for doing that. And that's, that's just another example of how we operate around here. Um, finally, you know, Deputy Mayor, you took the steam out of me, but I wanted to really give some kudos to the mayor.
Thank you.
Um, we came down here Saturday for the, the PD briefing. Very impressive. Every single stinking cop in this forest was in here, ready to, to hunker down and camp out for three days. Uh, and Mr. Mayor, I, I don't write on Facebook very much, but you did a yeoman's job of keeping the city informed on everything that was going on. So, uh, that's a tribute to you, and that's the kinda, kinda mayor we need up here. And with that, that's all I got.
All righty. Well, I appreciate all those kudos. That was very kind of everybody, and it's, uh, just in my nature to do things like that. So, better to have the information out there than have everybody wondering. And certainly, it was a lot easier this time than, uh, Charlie, when we had to actually walk door to door to door to door. Right? We were, Chief and I were talking about that this morning, actually, when, uh, some of the new staff members don't remember, but, uh, we actually, staff printed flyers up, and the entire council, some of the, uh, public safety officers, uh, the city management, we all walked door to door to door to door to door to hand out information to folks on, you know, who to call, what to expect, and, uh, things of that nature. Because after Charlie, I mean, A, there wasn't really social media back there back then, unless you still have a MySpace account or something like that. But, uh, it was AOL dial-up. But, uh, but we, we actually walked around. I mean, social media made it, uh, much easier. And, and the amazing part about it this time, the fascinating part to me about it, was the, uh, the amount of people that you don't usually see on social media, because you only see the same group, you know, the same hundred, 200, 300 people. But there were thousands of people on there that, uh, you don't usually see. So, everybody flocked to it. Uh, one thing I did get asked, Brian, before I closed out the meeting, is do, the PD has it. I don't know if the city has a citywide Nextdoor account. Uh, PD somehow has a license for it. Uh, evidently, I, I did get asked that by somebody who doesn't use Facebook a lot. Um, if at all possible, we could look at that for the next, uh, event. So if we push it out on Facebook, uh, I, I guess, Chief, it's a license that when you put it on Nextdoor, it goes to all the Oviedo Nextdoors or something?
Right. There's not a license. You just have to join the, uh, no.
Right.
You just have to join the, uh, Patrick.
Yeah, but you join it a little different, because if you join it in your neighborhood and, you know, unless, unless the neighborhoods are connected, you can't talk to the next one. There, there's something PD did, this, this woman told me, and I, I'll send it to you tomorrow, Brian. I, I forgot what they called it.
I'll add that to my public information also. I got the, uh...
Oh, she said it. Maybe she can get with Patrick, and maybe we can just get that...
I'll, I'll make that happen.
That, that way, the city has one citywide. We can push the same information out. But, uh, anyway, future meeting dates we have are, uh, excuse me, anything else for the good of the order from anybody?
Mayor, if I could...
Yes.
Add one thing. Um, at church yesterday, I had, uh, four residents from a neighboring city come up and talk about complimenting us on how we were pushing information out and how we were keeping our residents informed, and how they had not heard hardly anything from their city. And so it, uh, it was one of those feel-good moments that, you know, all the hard work did pay off. So, just wanted to add, add that in there.
Oh, that is good to hear. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Cobb. Um, future meeting dates, we have Monday, October 2nd, 6:30 p.m. regular session. Then Monday, October 16th, same thing, 6:30 p.m. regular sessions, about 8:30. We're adjourned.